And we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order for the month of September. If everyone will please rise and join me in a moment of silence in memory of our 9/11 victims as we look back 20 years ago, this month, the attack on New York City, Washington, DC, Pennsylvania, and our country. And we'll have 13 seconds of silence for the Marines and corpsmen that were killed in Afghanistan. Now if anyone will please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Counsel, you have had the agenda sent to you at this time. If there's any additions or changes to the agenda, I'll entertain those, and they'll be presented under other business.
I do want to talk a little bit about the nuisance ordinance.
Nuisance ordinance?
Okay.
I'd like to speak about the calling tree and the new sidewalks.
You're talking about the blackboard thing that we have?
No, where we call people when there's water leak.
That's the blackboard.
Blackboard, okay.
Blackboard.
The new sidewalks.
Anyone else have anything addition or changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept our agenda as it is presented.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands, please. Five oh on that. In your pocket, you also were given the minutes of the regular meeting for August 3rd, 2021. You've had a chance to look over them. If there's any questions or comments, I'll entertain that. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of that, please show of hands. Five oh to accept that. At this time, I'll open up the floor for public comments, and this is agenda items and agenda items only. You're encouraged to come up, state your name, and you can talk about what's on the agenda here before we get started. I'll give you three minutes if anybody would like to come up.
Hi, how are you guys? My name is Madison Story. I'm a Sparta native and a local teacher, and most importantly, the proud parent of two. For anyone that's ever lived in or even driven through our community, the magic is unmistakable. Our ability to come together and take care of each other in our community is unmatched. We have been given an opportunity, and now is our time to come together and do what's best for the youngest members of our community. One challenge that our county has faced many years is the retention of young families. Since COVID and the introduction of more remote working options, we have seen many young families move into our community. Now is our time to invest in this younger generation. When Duck and Pool closed, many people were discouraged with the recreation activities that were available for kids. In many of the towns across the state, splash pads have proven to be a wonderful addition, so we began dreaming about the possibilities of having our own. After asking around, many parents in our community are also interested in helping make this happen. We have collected a group of over 25 families that are willing to help fundraise and promote. If this project is funded, we will be available to help in any way that you guys see fit. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Madison. And for counsel, if you'll look on your agenda, that will be, we'll be talking about that a little bit more in Agenda Item Number 11 here in the meeting. Anyone else have anything to say on the agenda? If not, we'll go ahead and close our public comments at this time, and we'll go to Agenda Item Number 5 on our sheet tonight, and it's Citizen Comments, and representing herself is Kathy Andrews.
Thank you. I just am glad that you allowed me to come to speak to you tonight. We want to, as the employees of the town, wanted me to represent them, to thank you on their behalf for fixing the town hall. It has been a great asset. What we, a lot of people didn't understand was that the wallpaper was falling down, the carpet was so dirty and nasty, they tried to clean it, the carpet cleaner sucked it up, it was so rotten. People were falling over the carpet, and now we have just, the new flooring and the paint has made a drastic, drastic change in our working environment. It's cleaner, it's safer, and it's amazing that the people that have come into our office complex that have seen the transformation and has complimented us. And I want to compliment Councilman Polier for giving us the names of the people who did the work. It was a massive undertaking, 4,500 square feet in this building. And we tried to get local people, but of course, that was too much for them to do in the time limit that we needed. So I just want to thank you for giving us the people, the names of the people, because they did a fantastic job. And now it's a building that we can be proud of. And I'd like for everybody, I think all the councilmen here have, except for Millie, I don't think Millie's been in to see it yet, but you need to come in, and hopefully, a little bit later, we can have a open house. We've gotten rid of all the pink, we felt like we were in a Pepto Bismol bottle. And two, a local cabinet maker made the new cabinets for the front, and it made it safer for the person that's in the front, because there was no way to exit. We had to go through another office to get back out. And so now there's an entryway and an exit for us to get in and out, which made it safer for us. And let's see, and we'd also like to thank for the council who has, who went through all the people that were vying for this job for Town Manager. We want to say thank you for choosing the man that you chose, because he has been very, very helpful with us. He has been, how would you say, he's like one of us. He's not our, just our boss. He is also a person that we can relate to. He also chooses to do his, I guess, managing, he doesn't care who you are, he doesn't care who your mom and daddy was, he doesn't care what kind of status you have or whatever. He does it fairly and consistently, and that we are all thankful for. And I think he also is looking for the future on what the town needs. He's trying to attain those goals, but by not taxing us unnecessarily. And he is trying to work with everybody. I think the future of the town with his guidance and his leadership is going to do great things. And on Fridays, he's allowed us to have a cookout out back for all the employees, and we, none of the taxpayers' money's going to this. My husband donated the grill, Ronnie Norris buys the gas, we all pay for the food, but we have it, and it's kind of a camaraderie thing. Ryan eats with us at lunch, the guys, they all talk about what they did that week, or what they're going to do the next week, and it makes them feel a little bit better about working, because their morale, it boosts them a little bit. They're grateful for it, and I just want to say that I just thank you for your cooperation, and there's a lot of things I think in the future for Sparta, and thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you, guys.
Ronnie ain't cooking, is he?
Thank you for that, Kathy. Appreciate those comments, some kind words, and on behalf of where I sit, I believe we are on the right path. Ryan, I for one am truly thankful to be working side by side with you, you're doing an excellent job, and you've been here just a little over a year, and I give you complete good kudos on everything. I appreciate you, what you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a fantastic staff that made me look good and make this look easy, so I'm equally grateful for the team.
As you look at your agenda, we'll go to Number 6 right here, the transfer facility fees. Roger Brady will have the floor.
Thank you. I received a letter from Allegheny County back in January, probably three months after we worked out the cardboard deal to transfer the cardboard. And I was informed that the county was going to charge $73 a ton for each ton of cardboard we brought into the facility. I gave a letter to Peggy when I got it, and I also talked with one of the commissioners, and was very sympathetic, and was told that they would look into it. And then I received a phone call saying that the county had decided not to charge me for the fees, and which I felt had happened, because I have not received a bill from Allegheny County since January. I still have not received a bill today. But last week, this past week, when we went in on Wednesday, we were informed over there that we would not be allowed to dump any more cardboard until I paid the outstanding amount that was due to the facility for the disposal of cardboard. And so we weren't going to be able to dump. I came in and talked to Ryan, and we went down and met with Michael Carter, and Michael Carter told us, he said that the issue had been brought up and had been discussed, but had not been voted on. And he said, therefore, it's not on the books. And he says, we are going to charge you for the fees for the cardboard. They also informed me that when they opened the recycling center, that there would be no more fees for the cardboard, but up until then, that we would be charged for each load of cardboard that we brought in at the amount of $73 a ton. And the bill to date that they gave us, I think it was, what, $2,021 or something?
$2,080.
$2,080. $2,080 was what was owed to date. I received $234 from the town, which I applied to that note, which leaves a balance, I think, of somewhere around $1,700 owed. And I will not be allowed to dump any more cardboard until it is settled, they said, in full. And I can't understand why. I asked Michael Carter why I wasn't sent a bill, and he said that he would look into it. And he did not fail, in his opinion, that that was a very good way to do business. So I again talked to one of the commissioners and told him what was going on, and they informed me that they would handle it. But as of today, when we talked to Michael Carter, he's, he informed me that nothing had been done. I'm going to meet with Ryan in the future here, and we're going to decide what to do with the cardboard. And when we work something out, I think we can work something out with the cardboard where we can get the fees way down. But I will work with Ryan on that, but that's where we sit right now. And they've billed it to me. I asked Michael Carter and them to build the county, and he refused, or build the town, and he refused. He said, I'm billing you directly, was his comment. And it's not my cardboard, I'm only being paid to pick it up and transport it, I'm not being paid to dispose of it. So I'm asking for some help on this, and leave it up to y'all to see if we can work this out. I appreciate your time.
Go ahead.
I make a motion we pay, because Roger should not be, he should not have to pay it, but with a caveat that you, Mr. Ryan and Mr. Carter, get together immediately and work out some solution. But my motion is that we should pay the $1,700 balance, because it's not your responsibility, with that caveat, that this issue be resolved quickly between you, Ryan, and the county manager, and that's my motion.
I will meet with Ryan, and we will discuss what we can do. There's some options we've got.
That's my motion.
Now, whether his new contract does not state that he picks it up, disposes of it, or we give him more money, maybe right on goes then.
Yeah.
Roger, could you come back to the podium, please?
To answer your question, I'm letting our attorney review it. It does have a shall dispose, so go ahead and comment.
Are you shut out from just disposing of cardboard, or cardboard and?
Yeah, just cardboard. I can still dump the trash, but I can't dump, I can't, what it is, we pick up cardboard on Thursday, and I'm not allowed to dump loads of cardboard, pure cardboard. But I can dump my trash, yeah.
Well, back in February, we agreed to cover the cost for January, and then in March, we agreed to cover the cost for February, with the stipulation that from that point forward, you co-mingle the cardboard with the garbage.
That wasn't related to me. Nobody told me anything about that. Nobody told me to co-mingle the cardboard and keep it separate.
As a council, I mean, that's, was that not our consensus? And so with that consensus, you were supposed to co-mingle the cardboard, but, so with that being said, I mean, I can't see us covering that cost.
I can't see charging me for it if I wasn't told to co-mingle.
But regardless of that, contractually, you're obligated to dispose of it properly.
Correct. When I talked to Brian, I was, there was an article in my clause that I read to him, and he said that what that clause simply stated was that I was just trash and recyclable and everything, I was disposing in an orderly manner. He said, that simply means you can't take it out here on the side of the road and dump it. He said, that's to protect, to make sure it is taken to a facility. And I was told, when I started this contract to bid it off, I asked Tom Douglas, I said, I'm being paid to transport this for the town only, and I will not be charged, I said, I won't be charged any tipping fees. And he said, absolutely. He says, you're being paid only to transport it and to take it to the facility. The payment for what is in there will be paid by the people that you pick it up from. And that's what he told me, which is basically what is being done right now.
Well, I mean, if, again, if I'm not mistaken, I mean, just looking at the contract, I mean, it states that you will pick up and dispose of.
Well, what does dispose mean?
Well, again, I mean, dispose of properly, to me, would be, and I would say, by the DEQ, would be for you to take it to a transfer facility.
Okay. Does it mean that I'm to pay for it?
Well, and that's not in the contract, so as business changes, because prior to, you were collecting all the profit for collecting cardboard.
Correct.
Well, when that changed, we compensated you for the loss that you took on collecting cardboard and selling it.
You paid me to pick it up, not for the loss I took on cardboard. You paid me simply to pick your cardboard up.
Okay, but so we covered, we covered that cost for you for the loss that you took, that you otherwise.
No.
Then why did we, then why did we give you more money?
Because I was not.
Because you took a loss on recycling.
If you will read my contract, it says the picking up of the cardboard is not my responsibility, it's the responsibility of the county. So I came back, and Brian was here at that time, and he said, well, we have to pick the cardboard up. He said, we can't just simply leave it. And I asked Michael Carter if he would pay to pick the cardboard up, and he said, absolutely not. So I discussed it with Brian, and I said, well, what do we do? And he said, well, the cardboard will have to be picked up. And he said, we will pay you to pick it up.
And we did, and we do.
And that's all you're paying me for, is to pick it up, not dispose of it. You're paying me to pick it up.
And so then that cost will fall on you.
What will fall on me?
The cost of disposing of it.
No.
Because you're given the option.
Why, if that's the case, if that's the case, why would I not be charged for the picking up of the trash and have to pay for the disposal of the trash?
They don't charge you a tipping fee on the trash. That's between you and the county. But starting January 1, they gave you ample notice that you would be charged for the disposal of cardboard.
Right, and I came in and talked to them down here.
And we compensated you, and you didn't pay that bill, we gave you a check, I'm guessing we cut that check in February.
True.
You didn't pay for that January bill until today.
Correct.
And when you paid that bill, you told the county finance office that the town would pay the rest.
I said, it would be up to the town to pay the rest.
And you told them that the town would pay the rest.
What I said, it would be up to the town to pay the rest of the bill.
But so if all this hadn't came to light, when, when were you going to pay that money that we gave you to the county?
Oh, I reimbursed you for that money, but I should have done it quicker.
But if the money wasn't reimbursed, that would have went to the county.
Okay.
I think that when we had our meeting, and I could be mistaken, it's either February or March, that we asked to co-mingle the cardboard with, with the trash. I'm pretty much sure that I'm the one that said that, to do that. However, I do see that the county has been negligent in their fact that they haven't even given you a bill since January, since the January.
Correct. They didn't give me a bill at all.
So we, and we haven't received any bill on our end, that I know of, for disposal of cardboard, is that correct? I mean, from anybody.
And the bill wouldn't come to the town, then.
And it wouldn't come to us anyway, but I don't think we've been doing it. So I don't know if there's a lack of communication there in the billing system or what, but we definitely need to come up with a suggestion now. I do have a motion on the floor, that Millie has made a motion to pay this. So before we go any further, I want to see where the motion goes, because we need to, she's made the motion, and let's see how, what happens.
And in that motion, thank you, Mr. Mayor, in that motion, I did say the caveat, you all will get together and work this out. Now, it's not Roger's fault that things changed after the contract, they're going to go back, apparently, when they get the recycling started. So this is not, from what I can understand, going to be an ongoing boodoggle, but the bottom line is, this gentleman's picking up cardboard, and he's got to put it somewhere tomorrow. Correct? Thursday? Thursday.
Unless I don't pick it up and.
Unless he doesn't pick it up, which is going to cause a health hazard, blah, blah. So my point in this is, pay this bill, and then you guys sit down.
I'll work with Ryan on what to do with the future.
And I'm not saying this is right, I'm not saying that we appreciate this coming to this point, I'm just saying to move forward, to pay this bill, and in my motion, with a caveat, that you guys get together, Mr. Carter, Mr. Wilmouth, Mr. Brady, and work this thing out. That's my motion.
Okay, there's a motion that is on the floor.
I'd like to make sure that, you know, what we said is going to co-mingle with the trash, that that's.
We can co-mingle the cardboard, and I would have co-mingled it in the past if I had been told to do it. No one told me to do it.
Evidently, there was some lost communications right there, but anyway. Was that not relayed?
There was a letter actually sent predating this September 8th to all the merchants to co-mingle. So we reached out to the merchants, we communicated that from our meeting to co-mingle.
Was that relayed to Mr. Brady?
If, if we go forward, I'm going to need some correction on what working this out means.
Okay. If I have the motion on the floor, do I have a second?
Oh, second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, show of hands. Three, all against. Two, three, two, motion passes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
So you need some direction on that?
I think I need two different sets of directions for this matter. Contractually, it says contractor shall collect and shall dispose of in a lawful manner. We've been instructed to co-mingle, and that didn't happen. The county is not going to institute cardboard recycling for some time. They are not going to go against something they initiated in a fee scale. They pay for every tonnage that leaves that transfer facility. Cardboard takes up a lot of space on those trailers, which is why they instituted that Given we contractually have a shall dispose, we increase Mr. Brady's contract by $1,000.
Let me ask you a question.
$48.067 to, to collect cardboard. I need some direction on.
Let me ask you a question. The contract that you're talking about, it was originally to pick up the garbage in town.
And recyclables. It covered everything.
It did say, and recyclable.
Right, it did.
Okay. Okay. All right. But when we added the extra money for picking up the cardboard, was that an add-in to the contract?
It was.
Or was it a separate contract?
It was an addendum for payment.
Okay, just for my information, how long is this contract in effect?
It was instituted the 1st of July 2019, with an expiration of June 30th, 2022. So we're.
So we're paying to pick up cardboard, and now we're going to pay more to keep picking up cardboard.
This is not a problem that's going to go away.
It's not.
Okay, and I'm going to recommend to my brother that he not renew his contract. And when you do that, you're going to see a massive increase in the garbage collection fees.
I would like to point out that during our budget sessions, I did the research, buying a new truck, having it built, and hiring somebody in town, hiring somebody as a town employee would save us over $30,000 a year. I brought that to the budget session, and I didn't get any support. So I would be happy, at the end of this fiscal year, to bring that in-house, because we get nothing but disservice from the service that we get now. And now we're paying him over $100,000, just got a 3% increase at the start of this budget year, reimbursing him for cardboard pickup, and now he's asking us for more money. He's taking money from our taxpayers. Bottom line, and the check that he just paid the county today, he's had that check since February, and has neglected to pay the county, knowing that he owed that amount to them. At some point, it's got to stop. And, I mean, to me, and I'm not a lawyer, that would be legal, but that could be breach of contract. I think right now, you know, Roger says that he didn't know about the mingling, and I just want him to be clarified right there, that, you know, that when he picks up stuff, it's his responsibility to dump it over at the dump, take it to another dump, you know, it's not our responsibility there, but it's his responsibility to dispose of it, and you know, we pay him to do that. So I don't think it should be any question now that what he's got.
So, I don't think it should be any question now that what he's got to do to finish out his contract.
How did you inform Mr. Brady that he needed to co-mingle?
I called him.
And.
So, he was informed.
And all due respect, Mr. Edwards, and, and we spoke about the thing too. I appreciate your efforts. Having been here as long as Methuselah, I do think that Mr. Brady is correct when, when he says that any change that we'll take in the future will be more expensive, but that's just my opinion. Now, as to how you move forward, would it be conceivable to go to the merchants? It's not fair to make the taxpayers pay for this cardboard. Go to the merchants and say, look, we've got a little problem here. We're gonna have to hit you with a little fee. If you're separating out this cardboard, we're having a little fee. And I think that would be a very, a very equitable and simple solution moving forward. Down the road, we can have discussions about contracts and garbage trucks and things like that, but would that not be an equitable way to move forward is to put this back on the folks who are producing the cardboard?
Moving forward, it's just, he co-mingles, and then there's no issue. There wouldn't have been an issue. We wouldn't be forking out seventeen hundred dollars. Or, well, sorry, two thousand dollars. It wouldn't have been an issue if he'd just co-mingled. And that's the cost. That's, that's the cost of doing business.
And I'm not willing to pay you all the taxes. I pay enough taxes as it is.
Well, and, and you shouldn't have to if you don't separate yours out, but, but if we do have businesses, I'm assuming that are separating it, then make them aware. If you continue to separate this and we have to pick it up, then you're gonna have to pay for this to be picked up.
In your letter that you wrote to the merchants, was that explained not to?
Apparently not real well.
I mean.
Or are they?
They were told to co-mingle, right?
They were. Um, it was also instructed that we would pick up the cardboard dumpster and move it from their facility.
I remember that.
The town does not possess that capability.
Nor do we have a place to put them. Conveniently.
Pretend we're hitting our merchants for more money, who have already had to deal with the rising cost of their goods, and then we're gonna hit them with more money when the problem could have been solved months ago if our contractor had have just co-mingled.
Are we running into red right now on the trash?
We are due to, uh, rising, uh, garbage and dumpsters. We're actually about fourteen thousand dollars uh, over budget in that one right now. Now, make that sixteen.
So, at this time, Ryan, you're just gonna ask for advice from here on out, or how are we gonna do this for? How do you propose we go about this from our own? Because if, if the motion is, the motion has been passed to, to do that. So, from this point on, I think let it be known to our merchants out there that are watching that you are to co-mingle your trash, cardboard and trash. And it'd also be known to our contractor, like once again, to co-mingle cardboard and trash. Period. There is no separation no more. We have no recyclable center as of yet, so everything goes into one pile. Is that fair to say?
I think that should be plain, plainly said tonight.
So, that is what we will plan on? Maybe you have something to add?
I just have a question. I know we're gonna pay, how far back, we're gonna pay from February until when?
The seventeen hundred balance that he mentioned was my motion.
Okay.
Is that good to learn?
It was eighteen, um, eighty-six, it's what it's the original balance.
Okay.
So, we're plainly stating what we plainly stated in March.
So, let me reiterate that once more. To our merchants, to our residential area included that, put all your trash together in one pile, whether it be cardboard, plastic, or just household trash, all in one pile. Do not separate anything, period. And for our contractor, you are to pick up every single piece of trash, cardboard, plastic, or trash on each pickup. Co-ming. Is that sufficient enough? Can I turn to you, have you anything you wanna throw in there? All right, that being said, let's move ahead. We'll go on to agenda item number seven, the consideration of sealed bids for parcel three oh seven oh six, 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 one, three, three. And at this time, I'll turn it over to our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, uh, at our July meeting, uh, the council voted to accept sealed bids, uh, for this parcel, which is, uh, located off, off Grandview Drive at the, um, bristle compressor, um, pretreatment point. Uh, we, we did that, and we received bids until August twenty-sixth. There was one bid received, which I included in your agenda packet, uh, from Mr. John Miller, uh, therefore making him the highest bidder, and I would recommend accepting the sealed bid from Mr. Miller and authorize transfer of that parcel.
So, moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. There being any discussion, show of hands, please, in favor. Five oh on that. If you want to continue on, uh, Mr. Manager, you can go ahead and go into the lawn care and landscape service contract that we have amended.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, also included in your, uh, agenda packet was amendment one of the lawn care and landscape contract between, uh, the town and Boring Construction. Um, if, I, I'm sure you've all noticed, uh, the, the town owns approximately six parking lots. Uh, and due to some staffing challenges and, uh, some issues with getting, uh, spring privileges for, um, uh, roundup for a lack of, lack of, uh, better term, uh, those parking lots have, have become quite overgrown and are, uh, in, in disrepair. The amendment, uh, identifies five of the six town parking lots for routine upkeep at a monthly charge uh, during the active growing seasons of April to October, uh, that Mr. Boring will complete on a monthly basis. That does fall within our, our budget for town parking lots, so there'll be no budget impact. The amendment also identifies, uh, some minor adjustments in the mowing process due to, uh, our contractor having some fuel, uh, inflation and some staffing, uh, difficulties. He, he, uh, could not have realized those when he submitted that bid, and he has asked that we adjust that to bring his cost, uh, in alignment with, uh, where he needs it to be. I would recommend approving, uh, the amendment as presented. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are any of our staff planning to get licensed, to get pesticide license or?
We, uh.
Herbicide, pesticide license?
We are actively engaged in that process. Due to COVID, getting classes and tests are difficult.
Say, I make a motion, go ahead and, and accept that. And, uh, we'll, I'd like for maybe some of the, the town maintenance crew there, you know, to work towards that uh, certificate for using pesticide over, uh, homicide.
I have a motion for it and a second. Any further discussion on that? Show of hands in support of the amendment. Show of hands, please. Five oh on that. Amendment passing.
And I'm assuming that we're working on the staffing issues as well with our, I know our, one of our maintenance folks is out for eternity and possibly another with some, uh, uh, issues, so we're looking at covering those staffing problems?
We, we are talking internally what the budget can allow for, so yes, ma'am.
Go ahead and do number nine there, if you will, Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor Council. Um, before I was, uh, in, in this seat, there was a rather large monument slash headstone installed, uh, in the, the most eastern aspect of, um, the, the cemetery. There was a road that was graded and gravel installed to assist with installing that, that monument, uh, due to the weight of the vehicles, et cetera. The grass, uh, and soft ground would not support that. Uh, since that project has been completed, that still kinda serves as a thorough view for our, our drive, uh, network within the cemetery. It's become overgrown, the gravel's washed out, and quite frankly, it is a, a significant source of light uh, in our cemetery that our current contractor is working hard, uh, to, to maintain it and, and make it representative of a, a, a town cemetery. To address that road, uh, we, we looked at a couple of different options, and, and a quote was included in your packet. We looked at traditional paving, uh, with a two-inch asphalt, and then we looked at a tar and chip solution. Those, uh, price breakdowns are included on that quote. Uh, it is my recommendation that we move forward with one of those options. Obviously, the traditional paving costs more, but it's gonna last, uh, longer than a, a tar and chip. However, both will, uh, make that service more attractive, more dependable, uh, and match it to the rest of the driveways. So, I don't have necessarily a particular recommendation, but I would like to see this project, uh, completed before winter time.
All this comes back to cemetery fund there, right?
It does, and in our perpetual maintenance, uh, CD that is restricted for the cemetery, that is where these funds will need to come from, uh, and there is, uh, sufficient funds to handle this project.
So, you need a motion to do this project?
I do, and if anyone has a preference on paving versus tar and chip.
Don't do, do it right. Don't put it on there.
Yeah, I make a motion that we go with the pavement. On that.
Have a motion for the all-out paving and a second. Any discussion? Show of hands on all-out paving. Five oh on that. We'll move down to item number ten on our agenda, the website discussion with Councilwoman Richardson.
Y'all getting tired of this. I haven't had an opportunity to speak with the folks involved, so if you would, uh, bear with me one more time, we will table that until the next meeting.
Now, if you'll flip over, you will go to agenda item number eleven, the consideration of Kraus Park splash pad. Uh, Ms. Story has already, uh, voiced, uh, her statements on that and the support that she has from the group that she is associated with, and I'm gonna let the manager take it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Council, as Ms. Story, uh, kind of alluded to, this is, uh, an item that has gained, uh, a lot of attention recently in, in community, uh, not only town but county. Uh, but honestly, this is a project that the Parks Advisory Committee has kind of been discussing internally, uh, for about a year now. When, uh, there was a former, uh, county parks and direct director, we, we kind of discussed partnership opportunities there. Uh, unfortunately, those didn't, uh, materialize in, in the direction we had hoped for. This project kinda goes back even further than that. Uh, if this council will remember, as part of the part of grant application, there had to be a survey sent out to the citizenry to get input. Uh, that, that survey, which was completed sometime in two thousand seventeen, actually identified a splash pad as the number three top pick, uh, behind restrooms and security for Kraus Park. So, all that said, um, we have been slowly looking at a project scope and cost for a potential splash pad in Kraus Park. As you can imagine, you can make that project from as small or as big as you want to, and the, and the money follows the scope. It, it really wasn't until about three months ago, when I was engaged in a casual conversation with, um, a potential donor, uh, that this project got some, some forward momentum. An anonymous donor that doesn't live locally, uh, but understands the importance a project like this could bring, uh, and understands some of the challenges we have locally, uh, committed fifty thousand dollars, uh, to this project. So, that kinda started forming, uh, some conversation with folks, uh, such as Ms. Story and now the group that she represents, and with some nonprofit, uh, interest. So, the citizens that Ms. Story referenced in, in her, uh, speech, as well as the nonprofit, has agreed, um, or has expressed interest in raising an additional forty thousand dollars to match the fifty thousand dollar, uh, commitment we have for a total project scope of ninety thousand dollars. Now, in my preliminary reviews, um, we can come in under budget with a forty by forty splash pad with sixteen spray features, uh, which would accommodate about fifty-six kids at any one time on a splash pad. Uh, we certainly have room in the park, um, and I think from the survey results, citizens like Ms. Story and the nonprofit interests, uh, it has been clearly expressed our citizens want this. Um, we've got over half of the target funds already. So, what I'm asking tonight is a consensus among the, the council that you will allow Ms. Story and her group and some other nonprofit entities to fundraise in our community on behalf of the town for a splash pad. The town would receive those donations. That way, we track every dollar donated. We do it for about the next four months until the end of January, at which time we would evaluate how much of that target has been hit, and then we would make a decision of, do we proceed? Or do we, we didn't get enough, we call the project off, and we'll return those donations to the respectful owners.
I make that motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Hang on, just a second.
Okay.
Councilwoman Richardson, if you could, in your motion, authorize the finance officer to establish a special line item for maintenance of those donation funds.
I would authorize that and, uh, in that motion, and to see what the fundraising, um, comes to, we'll reevaluate at that point, but yes, I will add that to my motion.
You still second? All in favor of show of hands? Five oh on that. Let's get that splash pad.
Where in the park would you put this splash?
The swampy park.
Sorry, that splash pad, okay, great.
All right, that creek would be a good landing spot.
There's a, a couple sites, and, and quite honestly, the, the, the signing factor is gonna be water, sewer, and power availability. Where can we get those the easiest? What requires the, the least amount of grading? So, uh, once we kind of get some funding idea, we can start looking for a contractor to, to help us drive that.
One of, one of the things I'd like to see done is, I'd like to know what low-end, this is just bare minimum, and this is high class. I'd like to know the difference in what it costs for low-end, mid-wing, mid, and high-end because at some point in time, and I wish you ever. because at some point in time, and I wish you ever luck in your fundraising efforts, uh, this sound like a work for our project, and so I'm all for it. But I'd still would like to know, you know, if it would accommodate fifty-six kids at one time, that's a lot of kids on that thing. We may not need fifty-six slides at one time.
I think that's good.
I'd like to see, you know, at the end of the time there, when they was just talking about, see what what funds it was will be collected. I'd like to see the long-term uh aspects of it, or how, what's it gonna cost to maintain it. You know, we've had a lot of stuff in the past that, uh, we got a skate park up there, you know, they was, they were gonna put this skate park in, and they was gonna maintain it. Well, that lasted a few years. So those kids grew up. They grew up in town. So I'd like to see something there, you know, kind of telling what it's gonna cost to operate this thing long-term.
Very valid.
Number twelve on our agenda tonight is the consideration of special appropriation to the Allegheny County Agricultural Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, at the the last council meeting, um, Mr. Wishon from the Allegheny County Ag Committee uh made a presentation to the council uh for funding for the purpose of the county fair and to get rides at that. Um, and and the council instructed uh myself and the finance officer to to pore over the budget to to see where we could could find funds. Um, as you've uh heard uh already, um, COVID continues to to be a a plague for business operations, and the cost of doing business on the town side uh has gotten extremely expensive. Uh, and and the budget, um, as you can see, um, is is tight. We're running ahead in expenditures versus revenue in both categories, not something we historically do. Uh, so when the the finance officer and I was going through that, uh, we we wanted a realistic number that we could come up with. Um, and I know the the committee kind of insinuated the town could give ten thousand dollars when they made their presentation to the county. Um, unfortunately, the finance officer and I don't don't think that's realistic. Um, we would recommend that the town give five thousand dollars uh and and feel that we can move that within uh some of the the line items to to make that work with our current budget. I'll be happy to to answer any question, offer Ms.
Because they're asking for ten, and we we can come up with five.
I I think the suggestion was made that they wanted the town to give ten, that they they thought the town was gonna give ten. We never committed to any number whatsoever.
But they're asking for ten, basically.
Maybe that's what they want.
We got volunteered to donate ten.
Mr. Wilmeth, if if I may, um, I think that's that's certainly very generous. Uh, we're providing police protection, we're providing our boys to go to uh Music on Main. Anything the Irish Council has, they're cleaning up after it on Sundays, Chief. I saw out picking up signs on Sunday, so uh in my mind, we can't help some groups and not help all groups. Now, if you did a cumulative on what we have spent uh promoting these, helping these other events, it might not come to five, but it'd come close. So, uh, and that's where I would put my, I would make the motion that the five would be fair, since we've done it. It's like kids, can't do it for some, not do it for all. So we've put a chunk of money, put a bunch of man-hours. I know that our our maintenance guys on Fri- on Thursday night before Music on Main, were out cleaning the parking lots, blowing off the parking lots, the roads, till eleven o'clock at night. So I think that it's fair that we give this group that amount of money, because we're giving lots of money to the other groups. So, I'm making that motion and shutting up.
We can't, um, not to put you on the spot, we can't do any more than five without putting us in a spot.
I think if this conversation was.
Prior to the cardboard conversation?
Well, that, but June of next year, we could make it work. If we'd have worked it in the budget, we could make it work. I think currently, as as far out as we are from the end of the fiscal year and the way expenditures are going, it would put us in a very tight spot to do more, and and I hate that.
Roger that.
I have a motion, any second. All in favor, show of hands? Give them five. And it's five oh, give them five. Managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll try to keep this uh brief. Just wanted to update the council on the design build RFQ for the standalone restroom facility. Uh, last month, the council agreed to move forward with a a design build methodology. We uh put out an RFQ, uh, we received one uh RFQ back. So we were required to to re-advertise, which we did, uh, and we only got uh one, uh, which was lock lane construction out of Stony Point. Uh, they do meet all qualifications of the the design build uh that we put out. Uh, so being they're the only one, uh, we will enter into negotiations for scope of the project and a cost. Um, we do not have to enter into any kind of contractual arrangement uh with them until we have a scope cost, which I will present to to the council, and then y'all have the right to approve, or we can start a process all over again. So that is moving along well. I do hope to have a design and cost uh to present to you at our November meeting. Uh, so hopefully that will come uh sooner than that, but that is our target. Um, second item, I just wanted to share an update from the seventh annual back-to-school safety date that the Sheriff's Office um ha- hosted on August the fifth. Uh, the sheriff writes and says there was three hundred and fifty uh happy, smiling children and adults uh that came to Kraus Park to participate in that. He appreciates the council's uh support and the assistance of our police department in making that uh success, and says they will host another event uh for next year on August fourth, twenty twenty-two, in Kraus Park, from four to seven. So, uh, we appreciate the sheriff putting that on. Uh, that is a a good way for kids to get ready uh to enter back into school, uh, and and we appreciate him doing that. Uh, last item I have are events. Uh, the sheriff is also hosting a Run for recalls five K, uh, September the eighteenth. So that's two Saturdays, uh, at nine thirty AM. Uh, anybody interested in entering can contact the Sheriff's Office and at least from the back gate of Veterans Park. Uh, don't forget the Mountain Heritage Festival is this Saturday. Uh, and then one event we uh do need uh the council to approve, although it won't impact traffic. Is that correct, Chief? Uh, the Lions Club is hosting a Hometown Hero Parade on September the twenty-seventh, from six to seven PM on Main Street. They are doing a reverse parade, so they will line up, police share EMS fire down Main Street, have people driving by, uh, thanking those individuals for their hard work. Uh, and Chief and his crew will kind of be helping with traffic on that event. But since it does take place in town, it does impact the road, I would like the the council to vote on that.
Motion.
What exactly do you need?
Just a motion to authorize it.
I'll make it.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor, show of hands, please, five oh on that.
And the last event, uh, Music on Main for October the second. Uh, due to some uh configuration with the band uh that the chamber has, which is chairman of the board, uh, that band has requested a traditional stage, uh, and the only stage we have is in Kraus Park. So they would like to to move that vent event from Main Street to Kraus Park and reserve the shelters and the Kraus house for that event.
Make a motion, we we go ahead with that.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands?
And that's all, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Uh, but we also have two more music in the parks on the last Saturdays of uh September and October. We have, I think, one more cruise in on the first Saturday in October. Uh, so that's going on. Uh, just a quick note right here of another event. The annual uh hillbilly show has been canceled this year due to uh the COVID outbreak once again. So there will not be no uh hillbilly show on October the sixteenth. This Saturday is also uh Veterans Appreciation Day at the youth football at Trojan Field up here at John Woodruff Stadium. All veterans are encouraged to come out. They get in free, and you get to watch some good youth football starting about three o'clock. So come on up, be recognized, and enjoy watching our youth play football at home. First home game of the year for youth football this Saturday. Uh, with that being said, uh, we'll go into our other business. Councilman Brady brought up, he wanted to talk about the nuisance.
We have a nuisance ordinance, correct? And nuisance ordinance specifies that someone will check places that are unsightly or un- well. I drive home every day, and I drive by a building that has fallen in and has a tree on top of it, and it's right on my on eighteen. Is there any way that we can begin to look at that facility and see what can be done to rectify the mess?
We just did that one time, when Ryan was here, and I don't know what we were saying.
I'd just like to see, you know, I I think we got the ordinance. It's definitely a violation of it. Uh, I under- I understand and realize that the last time we enforced this thing, it cost the town a lot of money, and it may do so again, but that's one of the first things that people see when they drive into town from eighteen.
Who owns property?
Uh, the same individual that owned the the hotel did own that property.
Did own, not who owns the property now?
We'll uh look into that and get back to you.
They belong to the county.
I think, I think, let's put that on the.
We'll follow.
I I do remember seeing a uh foreclosure tax thing, and if the county owns it, then I would say that the county needs to fix.
We'll dig up some more information on that.
I mean, I'd just like to see it checked into and see what can be done about it.
Okay.
We'll get to it on that.
Uh, that's that's my point.
The next, next item in other business was about the new sidewalks.
Uh, very briefly, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, the calling, what's the calling tree called?
Blackboard.
Okay, uh, we had a water lake rather sizable on August the twelfth, and um, I had one citizen call me, which I don't mind. Now, for whatever reason, the the calling tree or the blackboard wasn't activated. The dispatch fielded eighty-five calls in thirty-five minutes tying up all three of the dispatchers. This is unacceptable on every level, because had there been a real emergency in our community, it would have been a real mess. So so my question is, how how is that uh blackboard activated? Who can activate it? When's it activated? Why wasn't it activated that night?
Let me go right first before that, as even said, two days before that went out, there was a connect call to everybody that was gonna be involved with that water turnoff on that hospital valve. There was emails sent, and there was phone messages sent. It has three different options on it, and kept, and sent three different times, at three different ti- at two on one day and one on the day before, I believe.
This was a leak, what you're talking about, there were messages sent out, multiple messages, correct? This was an unexpected leak on the twelfth of August that.
Right.
That Trojan Village, and it cut out a lot of people's water, and and my qu- and I'm I'm not pointing any fingers, obviously, the thing, and what you're talking about, there were multiple messages went out. But can we not, in 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 an emergency, who activates this thing? Why wasn't it activated? That's my question.
Certainly, so there are currently three individuals that can activate that. Uh, Peggy being one, Kevin Dow, and Megan Edwards are the other two. Um, why was it not activated? I can't answer that. Uh, what I will say is, uh, that was a very sizable leak, um, and quite honestly, it was an all-hands-on-deck type of event that committed every individual in our maintenance uh staff to do that. Um, should they, could they have? Absolutely.
And also, it was in the middle of the night, so that was one of the reasons we did not make the call, because it happened late at night.
And 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 I respect, I respect all that, I do hear that. Uh, Wes did, excuse me, Mr. Mayor did his best to put it out on social media, Megan put something out on social media. Unfortunately, everybody in town are not friends with Megan or Wes. So so going forward, uh, we need some chain of command, somebody that can go down there, hit that thing, because we can't tie up dispatch like we did and and run the risk of of a real emergency occurring, and those people are busy saying, yeah, we're gonna get your water back on quick if we can.
I'd rather interrupt somebody's sleep than interrupt somebody's emergency.
Right, and and.
Okay, and just to help clarify that, when we call from this, we get the call. So if we're calling in the middle of the night, activating the call, because we can do it from our house, there is nobody here still to fill the calls unless you break someone in.
That, and I understand that, and.
That's still better than.
But if you give, if you give them an email, and multiple emails, texts, et cetera, and say, we got a water leak, it's gonna be out till midnight, then if 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 they still have to call, God bless them, but but we've done our part. So that's good, and I appreciate that, just sharing that. Now, the sidewalk issue, I don't know what kind of uh guarantee we got with our sidewalks. If you go down beside eighteen uh South, which is where me and my little dog walk every night, uh, the sidewalk right at the corner of the old Belks Building, where they put a guy wire down for the crooked pole, has popped up about that far, all the way across. The sidewalk is actually broken loose. I don't know, as I said, what kind of guarantee, how long we're supposed to have these, but I just, I I would like that looked into and something done about the fact that our new sidewalk has popped up and before it pops up anymore. And I will shut up.
Well, I'll go back to your blackboard, too. At this time, I'd like to encourage our citizens out there that have not signed up for the blackboard and to be giving the updates, because I was called on several uh phone calls that night of the leak at the Trojan Village, and these folks did not receive anything because they weren't signed up. You can come by Town Hall, and you can sign up via a phone call, email, or text message, and get those those uh notifications sent in one of three ways. So if you haven't already, I encourage you to come to Town Hall, see Kathy there at the front window, and she'd be happy to take your information, or call us uh at our Town Hall number, and and we'll be happy to put you on there. Now, I had several people that called me that night also, uh, and that's, I tried to do the phone tree there, tell your neighbors, hey. and that's, I tried to do the phone tree there, tell your neighbors, hey, we just got a massive leak. Things happen in the middle of the night, and the first thing I think, that our guys think of is to hurry up and fix the leak. But we are, myself and the town manager today, as a matter of fact, brought this up to ourselves, and we have talked about it, and I have even volunteered my time to learn this blackboard system myself, having just lived right across the street here. It's easier for me to come in here and do it than it is to call somebody else in, so I'll be happy to work out some, any kinks there that we have. So, that being said, there being no other business, we'll move into our public comment opportunity, and anybody can come up and make a public comment. And there being no movement in the crowd, we will close that out. And at this time, we will, I'll take, entertain a motion to go into closed session for General Statute one-four-three dash three-one-eight, thought one-one.
So, move.
And a second, all in favor, show of hands, please, five oh, as we go into closed session.